All right, welcome everyone. My name is Amanda Wallmeyer and I am the local history librarian here at Johnson County Library. Before we begin, we want to cover a few housekeeping items. If you have any questions during the webcast, you can submit them through the Q and A engagement tool, and we will try to answer all of these at the end of the program. An on-demand version of this webcast will be available in the coming weeks and can be accessed on our website at jokolibrary.org/events/ondemand or on our Johnson County Library's YouTube channel. So, thank you for attending today. The Past is Prologue: Mexican Struggles for Equality Before and After Brown vs. Board of Education. The Past is Prologue is a bi-monthly program offered by Johnson County Library, where we highlight topics that are often left out, glossed over, or misrepresented in our history books. Our speaker tonight is Valerie Mendoza, a Topeka native who received her PhD in History from the University of California, Berkeley. She works in the Public Humanities, where her research focuses on the history of the Latinx community in Kansas and the Midwest. Valerie has served as a consultant to the Kansas State Historical Society, the Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission, and the National Folklife Network. Her interests include the history of Mexicans in the US, gender studies, and ethnic studies. Now, please join me in welcoming Valerie Mendoza.
Thank you so much. Thank you for inviting me to be here with you today, and thank you for coming and taking part of your evening to spend with us. So, I just want to, I want to start off with, you know, what it is that we normally think of when we think of segregation, right? There are certain images that come to mind, and if you go to the next slide, please. This might be one of those images, right? Separate water fountains, we might think separate waiting rooms, separate entrances at doors, you know, separate seating, waiting rooms, that sort of thing. But there, and you know, when we think of segregation, not only do we think of these things as being separate, but we're also thinking of it in terms of black and white, right? Like you see here in this photo, the fountain for whites, and the fountains for blacks. You know, the white fountain in the photo is much bigger, you know. It's, it's a height for adults, right? The colored fountain is lower, it's smaller, it's meant to look less. But segregation affects those of us who are brown as well. So, for example, I'm from Topeka, so as mentioned in the intro, my grandparents would tell me stories about having to, in order to eat food from certain restaurants, they weren't allowed in the dining area. They had to go to the back door and order their food and then take it, carry out in a brown paper bag. Or, the only day that they were allowed in the public swimming pool was the day before the water was going to be drained. You know, they had to sit in balconies at movie theaters. And if you move to the next slide, please. Yeah, also, so these, these kinds of signs, you know, weren't untypical, even, even for Kansas, right? Next slide. There were even separate elementary schools. So, this slide right here is a photo, as you can see, of Brainerd Elementary School in Topeka. Right next to it was a photo, I mean, but a school known as Brainerd Annex. I don't have a photo of that school, but that school was the Mexican school, and it was, you know, much smaller, it was, you know, it didn't have a lot of amenities, there were, you know, outdoor toilets, for example. And this, this also wasn't atypical, especially for the larger cities in Kansas. So, the most famous event to end segregation at schools, and eventually all public places nationwide, was a lawsuit brought by several families in Topeka called Brown v. Board of Education. The now-famous ruling that separate schools were inherently unequal, next slide, please, took place in 1954, and schools across the country were told to desegregate with all deliberate speed. But the Brown case wasn't the beginning or the end of segregation, next slide, please, especially for those of Mexican descent who live in Kansas and the United States. So, what you see here is a little timeline that I created, and it's, you know, within a very specific period, but these are either lawsuit cases, most of them are lawsuit cases, so, or incidents that happened in response to segregation of some kind. So, you see the first event happened in 1925, and it happened here in Kansas City, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. The second event on my timeline here was the founding of the League of United Latin American Citizens, which was founded in 1929 in Corpus Christi, Texas. But one of the reasons that the citizens of Mexican descent founded the league was because of discrimination, right? Discrimination, segregation, and to this day, one of the things, they're still in existence. They have councils all across the country, several in Kansas. There are various times been councils in the Kansas City area. One of the things they fight against is discrimination in education. There are also a couple of other, a couple of lawsuits at the local and the state level regarding segregation of Mexican children and Spanish-speaking children, in particular, at the local level in Lemon Grove, California, and at the state level. Mendez v. Westminster is one of the more famous cases. This case actually set a lot of precedents for the Brown decision and used a lot of the arguments that the Brown case would eventually use. And in fact, the NAACP wrote a friend's brief on the Mendez case. So, what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to talk to you about school segregation throughout Kansas, focusing heavily on the Kansas City area. And then what I want to do is talk to you about cultural, about resistance to this segregation and cultural thriving throughout Kansas, and focusing on the Kansas City area as well. And then I'd like to end the presentation with learning about, learning from you, about experiences of segregation that you or relatives may have had or that you have heard of, and, you know, any, any questions or comments that, that you have. So, next slide, please. So, first I want to start off with segregation in Kansas City, Kansas City, Kansas. So, Kansas City actually had a tripartite system of education. That is, at the elementary level, they had separate schools for white children, black children, and Mexican children. What you see here is a photo of the Clara Barton School, which was a school for Mexican children. It's speculated that separate schools for Mexican children started due to the 1918 flu pandemic. That coincided, the pandemic in 1918 coincided with a rise of Mexican immigrants coming in, coming into Kansas City. And back then, throughout, Mexican immigrants were associated with disease. And so, in 1922, parents petitioned for a separate elementary school for Mexicans. Anglo-parents petitioned for this, and Clara Barton School, the one you see before you, opened in 1923. And I should note, I just recently learned that this school was actually partially funded by the Mexican consulate at, at the time. And this wasn't unusual to have separate Mexican schools funded by outside sources. This also happened in Topeka, and it also happened in Dodge City, and I will get to that. But this school was a three-room annex, it was on the grounds of another school. And it was built for children in, Mexican children in that neighborhood. 1924 saw yet another school specifically for Mexican children. As you can see in this photo, there was no playground equipment. These schools also did not have a kindergarten or summer school. Lots of times, there was, especially for those that were built on the same grounds as a school for white children, at recess time, there would be a literal line in the dirt drawn that students could not cross over, or, you know, they would be punished. These, the school in particular, also had no kindergarten or summer school. That's, those types of amenities, if you will, were provided by the Methodist Mission or, on the case of Kansas City area, particularly on the Missouri side, by the Guadalupe Center, which had opened up also in the early 1920s. In Kansas City and elsewhere in Kansas, Mexicans were treated much like African Americans in terms of separatory treatment, separate facilities, discriminatory, discriminatory treatment, and social inequality. Kansas City had to maintain this tripartite school system, and one of the reasons they used was lack of English skills and a desire to Americanize students. Now, for the most part, students' English skills weren't tested. What they would, what happened, when they would see, you know, a Spanish surname, or they would look at, you know, look at the students being enrolled in their parents, and then they would automatically be sent to that separate, separate school. Oftentimes, separate Mexican schools, like Clara Barton, did not meet health department standards. So, for example, in 1939, when the school was unexamined, so for about 15 years, 16 years after it opened, it had outdoor toilets. There were eight grades with only five teachers for those eight grades, including the principal. Students were spanked for speaking Spanish, or they had their hands hit with a ruler. Oftentimes, teachers changed students' names, so, next slide, please. So, for example, my grandmother, her name was Jesusa, and the teacher changed it to Hazel. Or, you know, if a name was Maria, then the teacher might call the student Mary. And, you know, things, things like that happened. Next slide. This is just a mural that I really loved, that's from Kansas City that I wanted to show. And if you see there, you know, on the, the middle right depiction of a classroom, on the top is a boxcar home, also, a lot of Mexican immigrants worked for the railroad. Meatpacking plants, that they worked for the railroad, it wasn't uncommon for them to live in a boxcar homes. Next slide. So, in other places that, besides Kansas City, there was also discrimination. So, for example, in Newton, in the 1920s, Mexican children were not encouraged to attend public school and to skate away in very large numbers. It wasn't until a Spanish-speaking Anglo-nurse persuaded the parents of about 45 students to enroll. She literally went door to door, telling them, you know, your kids need an education, send, send them to school. Well, the amount of children in, in the public school swelled so much that the, the teacher threatened to quit, because she just had too many, too many students. So, what happened was that the Spanish-speaking nurse ended up teaching the students in Spanish for three years, until the process was abolished. And I'm not actually sure if she was paid for this work that she did. And eventually, Mexican-Americans were allowed to attend the public, public schools. But they weren't allowed to play on many of the sports teams for many years, until, until much later, I think, the 1960s. In Dodge City, Dodge City was also a really interesting case. So, Dodge City had an ordinance where students had to have their hair cut a certain length before they were allowed to attend school. But none of the Anglo-barbers in town would cut Mexicans' hair. Again, it's kind of that allusion to, oh, immigrants can be diseased kind of thing. So, a Mexican man opened up a barber shop and started cutting students' hair so that they could attend school. But he was arrested for being a barber without a license. So, and was, and was deposed. And when his case came before the judge, the judge actually ruled that barbers could not deny Mexican students. So, they were eventually allowed to get their haircut. So, as you see in this painting, it says Mexican Village in Dodge City. There was a, a neighborhood called Mexican Village. It sprang up right along the Santa Fe railroad tracks. Again, that's where many of the Mexican immigrants worked. And this is another one of those cases where private funding built a school specifically for Mexican children. The school was called the Coronado School, and it opened in 1915 and stayed open until 1947. It had two rooms and one teacher for grades one through three. So, opened in 1915, right? So, in 1923, a, a group of educators from KU were traveling around the state looking at schools. And they came to the Dodge City and went into the Coronado School to observe it and, you know, see what kind of lessons and how the students were doing, and the facilities, and that sort of thing. Well, they assumed the school was temporary, and noted that it was quote-unquote "so inadequate." And what I find really interesting about this is that this inadequate school was used for two more decades after those teachers came by. So, the KU folks noted, quote, "It is wholly impossible with such facilities to provide satisfactory elementary instruction," unquote. Eventually, the school was torn down, because Santa Fe needed that property to expand one of the, the buildings there for, for its workers. And then, when Mexicans were finally allowed to go to the public schools, what happened in Dodge was that they were put into separate classrooms, again, which isn't unusual, but these children were put into special classrooms with students who were receiving special education. So, they were put lumped together with developmentally disabled students, or developmentally delayed students, and I think that the reasoning was that, oh, they don't speak English, so they must be developmentally delayed, and we're going to put them together. But again, English skills were not tested for the most part. One student remembered that the curriculum consisted of crayons, scissors, and a pad of paper, and that that's pretty much all they did. This particular student was able to get out of the special education classroom, because one day after school, he was sweeping the hallways. I think it was as punishment for some transgression, probably speaking in Spanish. And the principal happened to walk by, and they struck up a conversation, and the principal was like, wow, you speak really good English. The kid is like, yeah, I know. And so, the principal's like, well, you don't need to be in that classroom, you can be in, in, in the main, in the main classroom. And that student eventually went on to high school and graduated from high school as well. But if it hadn't been for that happenstance meeting, that, that wouldn't happen, wouldn't have happened. Topeka is another school, another city that had separate schools. For example, I mentioned they had the Brainerd Annex that was located on the same grounds as that school that was in the very first photo. The Annex consisted of four portable rooms and two old brick toilet buildings. All Mexican public school children attended this school through third grade. By this time, it was hoped that their mastery of English would be sufficient enough that they could go on to, to other public schools in the city. That is some of examples of segregation and treatment of discrimination. I want to talk about agency and resistance next, but first I want to see if there are any questions or comments about, you know, anything that I, that I've talked about thus far in terms of segregation and resistance.
Yeah, we have a couple of questions. Let's see, the first one, this one might have been a misspeak, so just for clarification. Was there an actual Mexican Methodist Mission?
There was, so, yes. So, there was a Methodist Mission that catered to Mexicans in Kansas City, as well as, you know, Topeka was Baptist, so yes. But there was one in, in Kansas City, and that's a really interesting story, because, so there was a Methodist Mission that catered to Mexicans in Kansas City, but there was also the Guadalupe Center, which was Catholic, right? And so, they actually were sort of in competition, trying to one-up each other on the services that they provided to, to Mexican residents in, in Kansas City. So, for example, the Methodist Mission started out with a, doing these summer classes. Guadalupe Center did that as well, the Methodist Mission also had it. Medical services for Mexicans, and then the Guadalupe Center did that as well. So, it, it was kind of interesting, actually.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. And then one more, was there a prominent Asian community as well? And did they receive a separate school, or were they mixed in with one of the other groups?
Yeah, that's a good question. I am not really sure about an Asian community in Kansas City. I really haven't seen a reference to that. Dodge and Garden, much later, in the 70s and 80s, they, they start to have fairly significant Asian population, but those schools weren't segregated at that time.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions for now.
Okay, awesome. Well, I'm going to go on to, to resistance here. So, I want to go back to Kansas City and the, the Methodist, I'm sorry, Saturnino Alvarado, which was, I mentioned him in that timeline, right? So, as I said, you know, there was tripartite schools at the elementary level, but not above that. And back then, elementary usually went to eighth grade, right? But it was very rare, so high schools were usually just for white children or for black children, because not a lot of Mexican children went on to attend high school. They had to stop to, you know, to work, to help bring in money for the family. In terms of the boys, the girls were often, you know, kept home to help care for younger children, or, you know, help the mother in whatever household chores there might be. So, in 1925, four Mexican youths tried to enroll in Argentine High School. And they had all graduated from Clara Barton, right? So, they went through that school, and so, they spoke really good English. So, these four students, Jesus and Luz Alvarado, Marcos de Leon, and Victorina Perez, all tried to enroll, and, but the Anglo-parents objected to their presence. Hi. Skin color might have played a role, as Alvarado and de Leon children were much darker-skinned, right? So, the Anglo-parents presented a petition of several hundred signatures to the school board for removal of the children. But the school board actually refused, was kind of interesting, right? They said, no, we can't, can't force them out. But what happened was the school board said, you know what? We cannot remove them, but we are going to put them in a separate room, okay? So, they won't be mixing with your children. Well, Saturnino Alvarado and the other parents refused the author, refused the offer, and said, no, you know, we want our children, you know, attending the same classes as, as other children. Well, the school board was like, no, we can't do that. But, Mr. Alvarado, what we can do is we can pay for tuition and car fare to send your children across the state line to high school in Missouri, right? That's how badly they did not, they wanted this program to go away, and this problem to go away, right? We're like, no, well, they can go to school in Missouri. But again, the offer was refused. So, this actually led to a threat of violence against the Mexican students. So, the parents withdrew their students from school and lost a complaint with the Mexican consul. And actually, they kept their students out of school for an entire year. Um, you know, the school board could not use that excuse of, at least, these children don't speak English, right? And, but they also couldn't afford to build a school, a separate school, for only for, for only for students. And so, this, what happens is it becomes a game of passing the buck, and eventually, it becomes an international incident. And let me tell you what happened. So, in October, the state attorney general starts talking to the Wyandotte County attorney to work out a means by which, quote, "The rights of friendly aliens are protected," end quote, and to, quote, "Correct the condition that exists in Wyandotte County," end quote. So, the, so it's gone now from, you know, Kansas City local, you know, school board to Wyandotte County, right? To, you know, the consul protesting to the governor, the state attorney saying, you know what? You've got to fix what's going on in Wyandotte County, because the governor doesn't want to, you know, get his hands dirty in whatever this is, because he's going to be damned if he does and damned if, damned if he doesn't. The Mexican embassy took the stand that school segregation violated treaties between the United States and Mexico, and the And Mexico, and the Mexican consul general urged the school board to pay for police protection. For the students. And so eventually, the Mexican consul actually protests to um the embassy in Washington DC. And embassy in Washington DC gets the State Department involved, right, the US State Department, like within. You know, the Secretary of State. So they finally say, you know what? The Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo. From eighteen forty-eight, okay, the treaty that ended the Mexican-American War in eighteen forty-eight, this is what they're referring to. It says, that treaty, in that treaty, we classify Mexicans as white. So these students need to be allowed to go to that school. So a year later, the following fall, um only three of the students go, the fourth one, Victorina Perez. She kind of gave up and I think decided, or her parents decided that, or maybe they moved, I'm not, I'm not quite sure. But the Alvarado children and Marcos de Leon were admitted to Argentine High that following fall in um. In nineteen twenty-six. And actually, Marcos de Leon was listed in the starting lineup of the football team in October, so he was even allowed to play sports. There's virtually nothing in the newspapers about any protests. Once that happened, it was like, I don't know if the parents just accepted their defeat, or you know, what happened? Or the de Leon was that good of a football player that they liked, just, you know. Went with the flow, but um all three stayed in school um and graduated in nineteen four, nineteen thirty. I've been told, and I haven't been able to confirm this, but it's a great story, so I'm gonna tell it. But I was told that Marcos de Leon um eventually attended Baker University in Baldwin, Kansas. And that he played football there. And um I think his position was the quarterback, because the story I heard was that um to confuse the opponents. Um of other teams when they were playing uh football, he taught his teammates the plays in Spanish. So he would call the plays in Spanish to confuse the other team, so they wouldn't know what they were, what um what they were doing. Again, I haven't confirmed that, but I love the story, so. So yeah, so that's one example of resistance, particularly to schools that took place in Kansas City. And actually, Argentine um High, uh the gym in there is named after um Saturnino. Uh Alvarado. Another form of resistance is cultural resistance. Um as well, and I think the Guadalupe Center provides a really nice example of it. Um the Guadalupe Center was originally um conceived of and built um and. Operated, if you will, by um Anglo women, right? But. I think they did such a nice job with uh outreach and being welcoming. That the community eventually accepted the center as its own, so if you could go to the next slide, please. And by the nineteen thirties, um you know, they had basically taken, taken it over and made it their own. So you see here a picture of women cooking um tortillas in the kitchen. At um at the Guadalupe Center, there was also, um it's probably still there today, a very large. Um room, and it was oftentimes referred to as the living room of the community, so it would be a place where they hold, you know, parties. Um for all sorts of um different, different types of events. So it was, it was, you know, used as a way to um express culture, be proud of culture. That sort, that sort of thing, fiestas. The Guadalupe Center in the nineteen thirties started holding fiestas and there were, you know, um mariachi music. Um folk dancing, you know, right on the, right on the grounds, you know, in the streets. I've seen photos and it looks like people from, you know, all around the city um would come to these, these fiestas. Again, it wasn't unique to Kansas City. To Pika, Hutchison, other places had uh fiestas as early as this. As um as well. Another thing that happened, if you go to the next slide. Was that um. As the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies approached with the um civil rights movement. That also um found its way into Mexican-American communities in Kansas City was no different. So this is actually a picture of a high school walkout um at Argentine High. The same high school that didn't want to uh be integrated, so students are walking out in protest, you know, they wanted. They wanted things like uh, you know, history classes that taught, you know, about Mexican and Mexican-American history. You know, they had, you know, all uh all sorts of um other demands. And this wasn't, this walking out of high school wasn't unique to Kansas City. It's had started in the late nineteen sixties in Los Angeles. Um with students, again, who were punished for speaking Spanish, who, you know, um. Weren't allowed to use the bathroom during, during um lunch breaks, for example, those, those types of things. Texas, there were also student walkouts, Topeka had um one as um as well. This was a way of students, right, asserting their um agency and resistance. They wanted, you know, music classes, art, literature, you know, about um about their culture. Next slide, I think I have one more, I remember, oh, yes. And the other, the other thing that happens during this, this period also was the creation of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in Kansas City. Which was the first um Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in the country, so I wanted to mention uh mention that. As well, that um, you know. This was a way to help, you know, Mexican-American Hispanic people help themselves. Through um business ownership and advocating, um advocating for, for each other. I'm gonna stop there and open it up to questions, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you so much for that presentation, uh we've had one more question come in. And if anyone else has one, just a reminder, the Q and A button at the bottom. Uh well, submit your question. So now, today, the Argentine neighborhood is primarily Latino, uh but it sounds like at the time you're referencing, it was mostly Anglo. Do you know when this change happened?
Yeah, so I think um it's, it kind of happens during um. You know, that nineteen thirties, nineteen forty, post-war period. Where you have, um you know, a lot of uh soldiers. You know, a lot of men being drafted into the army and then coming back and then being able to move out. Um you know, with the help of the GI Bill and and um that sort of thing. So yeah, that post-war kind of period, just when it mostly happens.
Thank you. Also, if anyone wants to uh share a personal story, uh I can unmute you. Uh if you'd like to do that, just uh raise your hand using the feature on the bottom of your screen. A few thank yous coming in.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, the other thing too about the schools was that um. Particularly in the nineteen seventies period, there was a push by those very few, you know, Hispanic students in college. To try to get other Hispanic students to come um to come to college. As well, you know, through the creation of scholarships, through the creation in Topeka. Um the League of United Latin American Citizens had a uh a council there. And they were able to fund a, an education center that worked primarily with um Hispanic youth at the time. Because I tried to get them to go to college and um continue, continue their education. There was also um a center called the Oslon Center in Kansas City that did very, very similar work, so. Lots of pipelines being created.
Alright, one more, uh you referenced a court case early on, I believe it was nineteen forty-seven or nineteen forty-nine. Were there any other court cases after Brown v. Board, or was it mostly through the protests and things like that that you shared?
Oh, that's a great question. No, there were lots of other ones. Um one of the most famous ones, and I can't remember the name of it, um but it was. A court case brought in Texas um by some parents who were immigrants. And the public school, and again, I can't remember what city it was, in Texas, said, you know what? These, these children are not citizens, we do not have to educate them, they cannot come to our school. And that case actually um uh set precedence for uh public schools. Having to teach all children, no matter of national, national origin, or language, actually, as well. So um that's the the most famous and widely teaching one. That that comes to mind. Um there are still others, you know, because as we, is, you know, as we know, all deliberate speed. Was generously interpreted all across the country, right? So segregation, you know, even in the seventies, you know, there was busting. You know, to try to um integrate, um integrate schools and lawsuits over that and all sorts of things, so.
Alright, and now there are uh specific Spanish language schools that exist, and there's one downtown. Do you know about when those started?
So some of those were also part of this nineteen seventies um. Uh civil rights era, called the Chicano Movement, I know in Denver. Uh for example, activists there started a school. That um was a Spanish-speaking dual language, they taught, you know, Mexican, Mexican-American history. Um that sort of thing. I think also, you know, specifically dual language schools. Um develops kind of in that. During the nineties, when it's kind of realized that, hey, knowing two languages is um an asset. And it also makes kids smarter, you know, makes them better students, um that sort of thing. So um, yeah, so some, the nineties was, that's when they were opening all sorts of different types of magnet schools. And language schools um were part of that push.
Alright, it looks like there's one more slide here um about the Azteca Club, do you want to talk about that?
Um that is just a club, it, and not just, that was a club that still exists. It's um at a high school in Newton, Kansas. And that one was really interesting, because actually um it started in the nineties. And it was a club that kind of started as a Spanish club. Um but then it kind of blossomed into a club where students learn Mexican folklorico dancing. Um that sort of thing, and actually, this is, this is really good, because, you know, those kinds of clubs. Exists in, you know, many high schools where there are a lot of, not just Spanish-speaking students. But students of um Mexican or La- Latino descent, like Halo Clubs. They're often called that, or um. I'm trying to think of what the club is, uh my local high school is called, I can't, I can't remember. But those types of clubs where students can, you know, kind of come together and also express their culture as well. Yeah, those also started um in that nineteen seventies period, and I think. Kind of resurged and reblossomed in this kind of night, nineties period, and I don't think it's a coincidence. Um that those two decades kind of bloomed those clubs, the nineteen seventies with the civil rights. And movement, the Chicano Movement, the nineteen nineties, you saw a lot of um. A resurgence of that immigration, but also, you know, um students whose parents had been granted amnesty. In the eighties through um Ronald Reagan's um legislation. Their children were just coming up to high school then, in the nineties, so.
Alright, thank you. And last question, um if people want to find out more, either about their own Latino heritage. Or just uh the Latino heritage of their area, where would you recommend they start?
Oh, wow, yeah, that's a great question. Um so if your family lineage goes back to having relatives. Uh working for the Santa Fe Railroad. Um the Kansas State Historical Society has a lot of Santa Fe records, and they even have um. Records of uh worker cards, so individuals who, this goes about this. These go back to the nineteen twenties, maybe even before, so you could find um. I'll just use my dad's name, uh Juan, my grandfather's name, Juan Mendoza, and it would have a card of when he worked. Where he worked, what position he had, what his pay was every month for when. Uh when he worked, this, it's completely fascinating. The uh Census is also a really good place to go, it's searchable, the US Census, I think. Up to nineteen fifty is out um now. And um your public library should have um access. I'm I'm pretty sure the Missouri Valley Room at the main Kansas City um downtown library has it. I'm not sure if you guys have access to that, the Johnson County Libraries.
We have access online, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so um so those are great places to learn about.
Alright, well, thank you so much for uh your presentation tonight. So thank you to all the Johnson County Library staff who helped make this program possible as well, uh and thank you all so much for attending our program today. Uh our next The Past is Prologue program will be Thursday, December seventh at six thirty PM, and will focus on the Indian boarding schools. So thank you so much for attending, and we'll see you at our next program.